Time. So, welcome to those of you who are joining us via Facebook Live. We will begin our meeting in just a couple of minutes. We're waiting for a few of the members to join. So, thank you for your patience and we will get started in a few minutes. Thank you. Welcome Commissioner Miller. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much Commissioner Naya. Nice to see everyone.
So, we are going to get started. Welcome everyone. I know a few members are still joining. We are going to get started with calling this meeting officially in order. So, I am going to just acknowledge the members will do. I'll acknowledge the members who are present. I believe we might have quorum already, so we'll move fairly quickly in the beginning. We do have two special guests today, so we want to make sure again that we are staying on time. So, I'll just make sure if we can have Andrea from my office. Just so everybody knows that Leah will be joining us a little late today. She had a commitment, but Andrea from my office is going to help us today to make sure we're recording everyone who's present. So, we have Vice Chair Lane. We have Chair Naya. We have Commissioner Howard Mills. As of ex officio, Peter Criticals, Commissioner Raymer, Commissioner De Laurentis, Commissioner Elston, Commissioner Cooley, Commissioner Slijzer, Commissioner Mayor Alsberry. We also have Cheryl Caldwell on the call, Superintendent and Commissioner Killen. We have Commissioner Kerry Thomas, Commissioner Caliento and Commissioner Freeman. We also have with us today Scott May Farland, who's going to be doing a presentation for us, and Cook County Commissioner Donna Miller. So, we'll begin with noting that there were no public speakers that registered for this meeting today. So, we do not have any public testimony at the time. And we will do a quick vote for the minutes. So, approval of the minutes, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes by any of the members. If you can just notify who is making the motion and who will be seconding.
So, move Alsberry.
Okay Commissioner.
That is killing.
And Commissioner Killen seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 A minute approved. Thank you everyone. So, we will start the meeting. I don't believe that I have any updates on my end. Vice Chair Lane, did you have any updates or can we yield to Commissioner Miller? I'm sorry, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you for that. I do have some updates, but I would be happy to defer to Commissioner Miller. We appreciate your being with us this afternoon Commissioner. And we're eager to hear what you have to say, although we have a sneak preview of it. So, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. So, Commissioner Miller is here with us today. At our last board meeting, she introduced an initiative that is extremely exciting for us to hear about. And I know a few members from the commission are very excited about this initiative. So, what we're going to have, I believe I sent everyone the revised proposal language for this initiative. It will be a county-wide property tax incentive program to address food deserts, which again aligns perfectly with the work that we're doing and some of the initiatives that we had originally talked about doing as well. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to yield to her so that she can explain this very exciting proposal with the hopes that we can have a vote from the commission members to support this initiative. Commissioner Miller, you have the floor.
Thanks so much Commissioner Naya. And it's great to be here with all the members of the Social Innovation Commission. So, thank you for allowing me some time to address this exciting issue. So, I've been working alongside of the South Suburban Mayors and Managers. So, thanks to Christie De Laurentis and Mayor Alsberry, as well as the members of South Suburban Mayors and Managers, as well as the Midwest Independent Retailers Association to put together this ordinance. You guys probably do have the ordinance number. It's 22-5345. It's currently in Business and Economic Development. And we hope to pull this through at our next board meeting. So, the first, I just wanted to explain the rationale for this, and it's probably something near and dear to all of your hearts anyway. But the background is that there's so many lack of healthy food options in certain communities that have disparities in healthcare. And that's been a major focus of mine since being on this board is making sure that we address inequities, especially health cared inequities, and focus on the social determinants of health, which access to healthy food is one of. So, healthy food is a really critical ingredient to making sure we have health outcomes. And that's actually the focus of Cook County Government and the Cook County Department of Public Health. For many of you who may know, since I've been on the board for the last several years, I've been focused on the impact and incidence of heart disease. And put together some initiatives related to CPR training. And that is one of the ways that you can impact people who are suffering from heart disease and their ability to have a heart attack. So, heart disease is the leading cause of death, not only in Cook County, not only in my district, but definitely across the entire country. And we do have data that supports that the South Suburban, well, the Illinois Suburban Cook County Community Health Assessment has demonstrated that South Suburban Cook County has the least access to full-service chain supermarkets when they look at that data on a per person basis. And we have a high density score of corner stores in these areas with no food, healthy options. A healthy option means access to fresh fruits and vegetables. So, therefore, many of these areas, and it's not just in South Suburban Cook County, but in North and West Suburban Cook County, they've been identified as food deserts. And we do have a wonderful map that comes from the USDA. And it identifies where these areas are. So, that really is the impetus for where this came from. It correlates with all the things outlined in Cook County's policy roadmap to promote healthy communities by addressing food insecurity and food access. So, this is a property tax incentive that would be focused on attracting and retaining grocery foods in food deserts specifically. And this has a lot of data behind it to show that it's an effective strategy. And it does promote sustainable development in urban areas. Now, we might think of urban areas in different ways, but in suburban areas, there's rural areas. I always use myself as an example, although I live in Linwood, which is suburban, but I also live right next door to a working farm. So, you know, when we think about these different communities that are identified as food deserts, how this incentive could prove to be a catalyst for economic development. And there's other things involved in the incentive that we can get into if necessary. But that's really just the highlights that I'd love to, you know, leave you with. And the goal from me being here today is to get your support. And if you would be so kind and willing, and we have Christie here who can follow up with additional information when this comes to the board, if anyone would like to testify, provide commentary, that would be super helpful and also strengthen the cause and bring a highlight to this really important initiative.
Great. Thank you so much Commissioner Miller for bringing this forward and Christie as well for your efforts. I don't know, I don't see any hands, but does anybody have any questions regarding this initiative? Yes, Commissioner Cooley.
Very excited Roger Cooley with the Chicago Food Policy Action Council, very supportive of this work. Had a lot of conversations with Lon, with Mira about this work. So, excited for this proposal. I have one question because of the certification around the food desert issue. If during the lifespan of the tax incentive over the first period of 10 years, if that district moves out of being a food that stops being qualified as a food desert, would that grocer lose the opportunity for a renewal? If that makes sense as a technical question.
That's very technical that we did talk about a lot with the assessor. And I think that why, let me just say that because of the renewal period of time, we do hope to amplify and build up neighborhoods. So, I don't think that that was an issue as far as the tax years going beyond 10 years. So, I don't know Christie, do you have, because we were just talking about this the other day.
Yeah. So, for my understanding, and this may be something that we can dispose during the, just to ensure that we understand the format, but once a grocer is in essentially and is a full-service grocer, it essentially eliminates the food desert within that geography. So, if it's successful, we're going to eliminate the food desert. It will be transformative. The incentive will still be in place because you know, the investor earned it. And the same way is if for any of the areas that have existing grocery stores now, they may well be mapped out of a food desert area because they do have a full-service grocery store. But many of those, as we know, and we've seen in the last couple of years, are at risk of picking up stakes and leaving. So, one of the provisions is this flexibility that if the municipality is concerned about the loss of a grocer, a sole grocer, that would then tip it into a food desert area, then there's the ability to petition for consideration as well. So, that's my understanding. That's been a lot of the dialogue that's been in place or that's being developed within this ordinance now. Again, the retention is to ensure that there is not a tipping into a food desert.
So, is there kind of a but for?
Yes.
If they did disappear, then it would tip it into that.
Right. And so, that's part of what we were looking at, and we have some real case studies that that's a very real potential. And we know Aldi leaving, you know, some communities and some of the other ones that the other Mariano's pulling up stakes has really changed that dynamic. These, the specificity of the ordinance, I think, is significant because 55% of full-time employees, which would make benefits and essentially living wage, obviously, but also then supporting families, going for individuals and families going forward are unique characteristics of this ordinance, the 7D. I think it's really innovative and I just commend Commissioner Miller for really fast-tracking this because as she said, it checks all the right boxes and it's so needed. So, SSMMA has been a strong proponent of this legislation.
Thank you. Yeah, just as long as that was clear, you know, that the intent that this would last and that that possibility, so somebody could, you know, get graded as if we leave, if this grocer leaves, then it will be tipping the food desert and they'll be able to access that credit now.
And I was just going to add, I was just going to add one other thing about the, so you know, it's really empowering for the local municipalities themselves too. So, you know, even from the revocation standpoint, as well as identifying an area that has, like as Christie just mentioned, has a store in that area currently, but has, might have the potential to leave if they don't have any other incentive. So, it helps the municipalities because they know really what's best in their area.
So, excited to help be participate in the testimony. Would love to do that. Curious, would it be helpful to share this more broadly for community members to do advocacy with or show their support to Board of Commissioner members?
Well, I always think the more the better. So, yes.
Well, I would speak on behalf of EDAC, High Commissioner. My name is Howard Mills. I'm chairman of EDAC for quite a long time. And I would say that this would have our full support, this as an individual issue if it didn't come before us. But if it came before us specifically, I believe in the past, we have helped areas that have had this kind of need achieve a tax incentive. So, I would be very in favor of having a presentation come before EDAC.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Freeman with her hand up.
Good afternoon and thank you. This is really exciting and timely. So, I do a lot of work in Garfield Park, a community that was impacted by Aldi leaving. So, really trying to reactivate that space and not just incentivize a grocer because we do have the Save-A-Lot that is in the neighborhood. And so, my questions are, with a business like that who has received some incentives from the city, our concern is the maintenance of quality. So, it is one thing to get them there. Community is working with them, but there are challenges. And we do understand a lot of it is it's a tough market. But on the other side, neighborhood residents are asking for a certain type of community stakeholder. So, within the policy, I guess, what are the conditions of the maintenance of being able to tap into that incentive?
The maintenance of the store itself?
Some of it's a store, some of it's, we're having, so in our case, the store literally was shut down. So, when they took it over, they said they were going to make all these improvements. Improvements didn't happen. Store got shut down. It's reopened. And we are working with this, this business owner, one to get tapped into expectations of community partnerships around hiring. We are also asking for opportunities for local ownership. So, if there is opportunity for equity buy-in through community investment vehicles. So, really some additional criteria that make make the grocery store, number one, more incentivized to stay in the community, but to also look at this as a long-term investment. Because many of those things realistically are not going to yield an immediate return, but will add to the viability and sustainability of the endeavor over a period of time.
Right. Well, I think Cheryl, yes, I see you chomping at the bits. You want to say something?
I'm so sorry. I'm a Teams person. I cannot find my hand. But the application, when the application is presented, it should have detailed information of what the applicant plans to do or the potential grocer. And when it comes to, if they don't recognize and they don't do what you, the municipality would like them to do, then the municipality has the right not to renew it or demand on renewal that they do handle these things before the renewal is actually approved. So, there's a way, you know, to kind of keep your eye on the grocery store to make sure that it's living up to its potential.
And thank you so much.
Commissioner Freeman, if I could also just add, I think the other interesting component that was built into the ordinance was the requirement, if you're an existing grocer, you are only eligible for this incentive if you're reinvesting in your facility. So, it's a reinvestment strategy as well and an improvement strategy. So, you can't just petition and go on as you've been doing in the past. You really have to make a commitment to the community. And I think that's one way to hold these, you know, potential challenges at the community level accountable.
That is phenomenal to hear. And I would say as a representative of the Garfield Park Rights to Wellness Collaborative, definitely bringing this information to neighborhood residents would be helpful to hear that this type of ordinance and law is being considered.
Thank you. And one of the other things I wanted to add into the chat, if I could, is the interactive map. If we don't have it, I can send it to you. It's an interactive map from the USDA that highlights the food desert areas. So, this is really helpful for neighborhoods that might not seem to be in a food desert, but do meet that criteria as well.
Commissioner, maybe the other thing to provide along with that is the fact sheet that was developed that has those embedded links and also some case study from outside of Illinois where this similar initiatives have really moved the needle in communities that need, you know, access to healthier food.
Okay Commissioner Naya, we can get that to you.
That would be great. And we can forward it over to the members. Great. So, I'll accept a motion now to approve support. And what I mean by that is that we would just write a letter of support on behalf of the commission members for this initiative. And it will be presented as part of the record in the Business and Economic Development Committee. So, I'll entertain a motion. Christie, do you want to make that motion since it was?
I would very much welcome the opportunity to move
Thank you.
endorsement of this ordinance. Thank you.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Caliento. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed or abstentions to this vote? Okay, the ayes have it. So, we will be providing, again, part of the record, a letter of support for this initiative. Thank you so much Commissioner Miller, again, for your vision, for your hard work and, you know, coming before the commission today and really introducing this really exciting proposal.
Well, thank you all. And thanks for being collaborative and supportive. And when the first door opens, I hope you all come to their grand opening.
We sure will. Thank you Commissioner Miller. Appreciate your leadership.
All right. Take care everybody. Bye bye.
Bye bye. So, I will, the next item is our presentation. So, I will hand it over to our wonderful Vice Chair Lane.
Yeah, yeah. And I had deferred a couple of announcements I wanted to make so as to accommodate Commissioner Miller's presentation, which was very worthwhile. And I would also like to acknowledge specifically the hard work Commissioner De Laurentis and Commissioner Cooley have done on this very effort. We've had the number of conversations about it and they are truly extraordinary leaders in this space. And I think this ordinance will make an enormous difference in food deserts here in the county. So, thanks to them. So, yeah, I'll try to be very brief here, but I do have a couple of announcements relating to our working groups. As everyone knows, the heavy lifting is done between commission meetings by the working groups. And so, I wanted to give you kind of a preview of coming attractions here, but also point out a couple of things that have been brought to my attention. So, first of all, as I think we all know now, as of last meeting, Commissioner Yonan has rotated off the commission. Consequently, that creates a vacancy in the leadership of the underutilized church property working group. So, in the event, anyone either within that working group or not yet within that working group would like to step in, I think it's an extraordinary opportunity to take properties that can be rededicated for public purposes to explore all the creative ways that might be accomplished. So, if anyone would be interested in stepping into Commissioner Yonan's massive shoes, please reach out to me and I will be grateful to you as well, everyone else who works on that working group and the commission at large. That's one thing. Second, more broadly, we're obviously going to have reports of the working groups later in this meeting. But I think it's timely and appropriate, for reasons I will disclose in a moment, for anyone who was not yet enthusiastically engaged in one or more working groups to become so engaged. And I'm going to identify what the working groups are at this point. Who is the chair of the working group? And I invite you to either reach out to the chair or reach out to me. And you will be plugged in to what is really the fundamental purpose of why we're all gathered together here. That is to create actionable policy at the county level. So, let me again briefly identify the working groups as they currently exist and who is chairing them. So, you'll know who to reach out to. And in all cases, if you'd like to reach out to me, I'll plug you into the right parties. So, the Community Investment Vehicle Working Group, which is chaired or co-chaired by Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Raymer. The diverse talent pipeline working group, Commissioner Aglopay. The reparations working group, Commissioner Anderson. The electric vehicle working group, Commissioner Killen. The crime and criminal justice working group, Commissioner Austin. And the industrial policy working group, Commissioner Thomas. So, you are not constrained. If you're interested in working in more than one group, God bless you. Would love to have you do that. But I think everyone should. Yes, Commissioner Caliento is eager to work within the diverse talents pipeline working group. So, is Commissioner Aglopay here at this point?
No, she is not.
She is not.
She did not join us yet.
Okay. Well, okay Kathleen, I will see that you are plugged in. I thought I might have done that once before, but I appreciate your reminding me and we'll see if we can get you actively involved. And to the extent any of you would like to join any of those groups, we need you. This is where the action actually occurs. This is where the ordinance is incubated or the policy with teeth in it is incubated. And we then get to claim credit for what we've done, but let's do it before we claim the credit. So, that's that. All of which is to kind of set the stage for the fact that at our November meeting, we will have the final expert witness testifying before the commission for the year. And he will be contributing to the work product of the reparations working group. The December meeting, however, will not have a witness. We will depart from our historic pattern. And instead, it will be all hands on deck. And we're going to all get involved in each of the working group's activities, see to what extent we can add value, bring these initiatives along, see what additional steps might be necessary in order to optimize the work of each working group. And I think that's going to be an important meeting. We will also then be obliged by statutes to develop an annual report. This now becomes the first opportunity for us now to document what has been accomplished for the year and will kind of set the pace of where we're going, beginning at and will kind of set the pace of where we're going, beginning into the new year in consultation with Chair Anaya. It is her hope and mine that that December meeting may in fact be an in-person meeting. Things can change between now and then, but my hope is that we will meet in the Cook County Boardroom in the county building, which is where this commission has historically met pre-COVID. And now that we are at a low COVID level in the city and in the county, this becomes not only an important symbolic step, but substantively gives us an opportunity to actually all be together face to face. So so there we are. And so that's, that's all I had to say about all of that. And I hope you, if you've not yet been involved in one or more of the working groups, you will raise your hand because we need you. It's one for all and all for one. So thank you for that. And Chair Anaya, with your permission, I think the next item on the agenda is to introduce our witness who is going to present some actionable policy recommendations. Is that appropriate for us to move forward?
Yes, I did see Commissioner Thomas with her hand up. I'm not sure if she had any questions regarding your announcements.
Thanks, I, I can't say to the end of the meeting. I just want to say the Industrial Policy Working Group is working on setting a first meeting. It looks like it'll be the afternoon of Friday, October 28th. So if you're interested, please email me, and I will make sure you get the information. Thanks.
Here, I assume I'm interested, please. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Thank you. So, so let's, this is really a personal pleasure for me to bring to the commission and old friends to many of us, I assume. Scott McFarland, who for 14 years was at the Serve Illinois Commission on Volunteerism and Community Service, the last six being the executive director of that body. I was privileged to be appointed to serve on the commission by Governor Quinn. So I have seen Scott in action. Since then, he's moved on to become first the executive director of the Missouri Community Service Commission, and now is the Director of National Services for Lead for America. He is working on his doctorate in public administration. He can actually teach a lot of us about public administration. He's truly an expert on the field. And I also point out that he's an Eagle Scout, and I mean that not only literally, but figuratively, in every sense of the word, he is an Eagle Scout. So Scott's going to talk to us about some very intriguing, provocative, innovative, disruptive ways to maximize volunteerism within the county. And, you know, so many nonprofits and social enterprises and government units, for that matter, are heavily dependent upon volunteers and heavily dependent upon mentors, who I will see as a subset of volunteers. And yet there are some challenges associated with recruitment and retention of volunteers. And Scott's come up with some ideas, he's looked at other states. He's operating today on a national basis within the position he holds. He worked here in Illinois for a long, long time, now in Missouri for a long time as well, where he lives. So, you know, one of the things I'm curious to learn about is this notion of a passport for volunteers to make sure that they're they're what they ought to be, and that the organization who recruits them is not going to be burned by them. So there's some, there's a really interesting and sometimes subtle challenges associated with maximizing the opportunity of volunteers. And I know that many of your organizations rely on them heavily. So I think you may be interested in what he has to say wearing more than one hats, being here today as commissioner. So Scott, thanks again for being with us. I'll turn this over to you. I believe you wanted to advance your own slides.
Yeah, if I have access to share, I can do that.
So if we can make him a co-host, so he can share the slides with us, that would be appreciated.
We are on it. Give us a
And there it goes. Thank you.
Thanks for that. The floor is yours. Thank you again.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate the time, everybody. As was mentioned, I spent most of my career in Illinois, working with the Serve Illinois Commission. So I have worked with a lot of your organizations before and miss working in the Cook County area quite a bit. With my new job, working with Lead for America, which is a national nonprofit that's working to bring people back to their hometowns. And the idea of our CEO is to stitch our country back together with service. So this is a great opportunity for me to provide some information to you and some ideas in working in the field for quite a while. I'm also looking forward to returning back to Illinois here in the next year, now that my career path has shimmyed a little bit, so it's exciting to be chatting with you all. One other little personal note that Mark did not mention is I served as the president of the Springfield School Board for several years. So when Mark is talking about committee work, I appreciate that quite a bit and really appreciate all the service that you're doing on this commission, everybody. So, real quick, Mark asked me to discuss some impediments into volunteer access and how we can work with local government and organizations to make it easier to get folks volunteering in their community. Before we do that, I want to give you a little bit of data where we are right now. So every year, the Bureau Labor Statistics puts out the Volunteering in America Report. It's actually been delayed since the pandemic. So my data is a few years old, but this is the newest data that we have. So in the metropolitan area, which covers mostly Cook County and a little bit of the collars as well, we had, in one year's time, nearly 2 million people volunteer. They gave 151 million hours of service, which if you look at the independent sector, which is a national organization that prices out the cost of a volunteer hour, that's about $4.6, $4.7 billion of service that's given to the community every single year through volunteerism, which is a huge impact, of course, and most of you see it almost on a daily basis in your work. But that's only 25.6% of residents in the area who volunteer. We ranked at 39 out of the major cities across the country, and we do lag below the national average of volunteerism, which is about 30%. One highlight I will say, though, is of the three major metropolitan areas, New York, LA, and Chicago, the Chicago metropolitan area is the highest ranking volunteer city. So we're doing better amongst the large metropolitan areas, but nationally, we are lagging behind in volunteerism. So why do we want people to do this? Well, I'm preaching to the choir here, but volunteerism data shows us that communities that see increased volunteerism experiences less crime, faster economic growth, and higher educational attainment for its residents. Along with that, individuals that volunteer experience longer, healthier lives. They have higher educational professional attainment. They're more engaged in civic organizations, be it fraternal organizations, be it governmental organizations or what have you. And they're more willing to donate to causes and to organizations and just be civically engaged, both in service but also financially. Along with that, a study that came out a few years ago called Volunteerism as a Pathway to Employment pointed out that people who volunteer are 27% more likely to see them getting the job that they're looking for. If they do not have a high school diploma, that goes up to 51% more likely to get the job they're looking for. And if they're in a more rural area, it's 55%. So volunteerism absolutely correlates to finding that economic attainment that people are looking for. So obviously, if we can get that volunteerism rate up for our communities, we're going to see improvement across the board, both in education, economics, public safety, the list goes on and on, on public health and so forth and so on. So why don't people volunteer? There's tons of research data out there that tells us that when we ask somebody why they didn't volunteer, they give us one of three answers. I did not know where to go. No one asked me to volunteer, or I just didn't have the time to volunteer. So in our work, as people who are trying to engage our communities, we need to work to answer all three of these questions. We need to help people understand that there is an absolute need for anyone, everyone, to volunteer. And everyone, regardless of their background, has the ability to volunteer in some way, shape, or form. Along with that, they need to be asked to volunteer and to know where to go to volunteer. And then finally, we need to make it easier for them to find the time to volunteer, wherever that may be. So I reached out to quite a few of my colleagues after Mark had reached out to me and just kind of asked around of, you know, what are the main issues that volunteers are facing right now? So I wanted to throw a couple at you, but then I also want to get in the depth of the last one, and Mark has already mentioned this one is two, which is the background check passport. So transportation is a hugest issue, especially in metropolitan areas for volunteers. People want to go out and help. But if they can't get to the site where that volunteerism is needed, you're not going to get them there. Along with that, ensuring safety of the location. I had several folks mentioning to me that even if they can get transportation to a place, if they don't feel comfortable in that location, be it at the parking lot nearby or having to navigate the area, then they're not going to be willing to volunteer as well, too. Ensuring that volunteer opportunities are inclusive for people with disabilities. It's not just a matter of saying we are open to anyone to volunteer, but making sure that our position descriptions, making sure that our opportunities in general are written in a way and conducive in a way that is open and inclusive to all people. Flexible scheduling is huge, especially after the pandemic. We see a lot more people volunteering teleservice. We see a lot of people being able to volunteer only in certain parts of the day or certain hours of the week and being more flexible. The time of having your volunteers who are with you for nearly full time, the time of having those folks who are going to be volunteering with you for 20, 30 years, that time has come and gone. Now people volunteer not based on an organization, but based on a cause. And the cause that they're interested in changes over time. So making sure that the organizations are flexible is very important to this. And also partnering with existing organizations already out there. In the Cook County area, we have several volunteer centers who work to place volunteers across the area. And working with them and bolstering their activities and then finding areas where they're not covering and building up other volunteer centers, be it traditional brick and mortar or being digital, would be helpful in placing volunteers. In the area, we currently have Chicago Cares, the Volunteer Center in Northeast Metropolitan Chicago, Hands-on Suburban Chicago, and the Community House. There may be others, too, but those are the ones that I'm aware of. So a lot of these are stuff that's done at the organizational level, but at the governmental level, there are things that we can be doing to support these efforts. Again, working to partner with these volunteer centers, finding ways to make volunteering more conducive to folks and being inexpensive when they're already giving their time for free, making it as least of a draw as possible. Because the other thing, too, is I talk about inclusivity with people with disabilities. I also think we need to do a better job of inclusivity when it comes to people of all economic backgrounds. Because what you find is usually the people who volunteer are the people who can afford to volunteer. They're people who have the wherewithal and the ability to take time away from their job or jobs to do this. But if we find ways to make volunteering more affordable to folks, you will get folks volunteering who are also receiving the services the organizations are providing to them as well. And it's a great pipeline of service to help people grow. The other area that I really wanted to hit on today is something that we tried to do a couple of years ago. And by we, I mean it was the Illinois Commission, as well as Chicago Cares, the Chicago School District, and a few other organizations in the metropolitan area had came together to discuss the need to support organizations who have to run background checks on volunteers. Background checks can be expensive, they can be time, taking time away from the organization, from staffing. And also, they may take time and where the person who would be the volunteer leaves before the background checks are completed. We had discussed doing some sort of passport that would allow for folks to apply to a central organization to be background checked. And that background check, along with rap reports that would continue to update, would be able to be transferred from one organization to another. So if somebody volunteers at a local school district, the school district can look up that person's background on the spot and say, okay, they do not have any in their background that would make it impossible for them to volunteer with us. And then maybe the next day, the person goes down to the local food pantry and wants to volunteer, and the same idea. They could look at the same database, instead of having both organizations pay for multiple different checks and having that volunteer potentially having to go to get their fingerprints done multiple times, just making it easier and more conducive for folks to get involved. So unfortunately, for several different reasons, that didn't pan out, the work that we were doing a few years ago. But there are some examples across the country that have worked. And one of those case studies I wanted to talk to you about real quick was Arizona. Arizona, on a statewide level, has created a volunteer, a field, I'm sorry, a fingerprint clearance card. This originally was created for different certificated professionals. So ensuring that doctors and folks who work in healthcare and work in childcare and so forth and so on had clearance to operate in these professions via their background checks. It was expanded to include volunteers as well. And what happens is the volunteer themselves applies to the state, in this case, to have their checks ran, and this includes an FBI fingerprint check. Once they have got that check ran, they are cleared and they receive a fingerprint clearance card, an ID number, to where for five years, the organization can go, or the individual can go to any organization that they want to volunteer with. And the organization can go to the statewide database, type in that person's card, and get updated information. Not only if they've cleared the background check, but if there is anything in their background that may make it inconducive for them to volunteer at a certain organization, the organization would know that. For example, if somebody has a DUI, you probably aren't going to be willing to let them drive a vehicle. So it would show up that, yes, they're cleared as the volunteer. However, there is this issue with their driving history or whatever that may be. This does several things. One, the individual volunteer only has to do it once every five years. So it makes it very easy for them. They don't have to go back and get checks multiple times. The organization no longer has to flip the bill for all these checks, or if they do, they only have to do it once. And then that check again is good for that five years because the wrap back allows for it to be updated by the central system. So every time somebody checks it, they get new information that may pop up. In total, to run a background check on a volunteer, I usually would tell my organizations that I work with to budget about $75. So if you imagine you're working with potentially tens, if not hundreds, of volunteers, that's a huge budgetary issue for you, not to mention the staff time it takes to run that. So an idea like this could potentially save organizations hundreds of thousands of dollars yearly. And also, again, get more people willing to volunteer because they know that they're going to be able to do so without having to go through the same hoops multiple times. It's not the end-all decision that would change everything for everybody, but it's going to get more people out there volunteering. So that's just one and several ideas that I have seen work over the past. Happy discussing that with you and also happy providing more information. But I would love to see Cook County work on some kind of model like this to where, if not statewide, at least at this level of having some kind of volunteerism passport that would be able to assist in navigating all these different organizations that these people are looking to volunteer for and also saving these organizations a lot of staff time and a lot of money. And that is it for my brief presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions or chat.
Thank you so much. Questions? More comments?
Commissioner Raymer has her hand up.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Scott. That was a really interesting and good presentation. Thanks for all your work in this field. Volunteer coordinating is a challenge.
Burning cats is what I call it.
Yeah, herding cats, herding cats and all that. So, yeah, I work at BMO Harris Bank and, you know, over the years, many different models and initiatives for employee volunteering and a lot of great ideas out there, but when it really comes to organizing it and making it a good experience for both the nonprofit and the and making it a good experience for both the nonprofit and the employee, you know, those are sometimes two very different things. Um, I did have a couple of questions. Um, could you, one of the things that struck out to me, you said one of the benefits of volunteering was like a pathways to a job?
Yes.
Can you elaborate that on a little bit of what you've seen?
Yeah, and actually, let me do some quick Googling here and I'll get you the report as well, too. It's a service as a pathway to employment is the name of it. And I'll get you the link here in a moment. But it was a research done over several years of folks who were trying to obtain employment. And it was found that those who had volunteering in their background for one way, reason or another, were more apt to find the job that they were looking for. The assumptions in that are obviously volunteerism provides more experience on a resume. But it also opens a lot of doors in terms of networking. As we all know, a lot of positions are never really posted. But if you're volunteering with an organization, that organization is going to know who you are and know that you may be viable for a position that opens up. And so that opens doors that way as well, too. So the, the data on it is that anyone who volunteers is 27% more likely. And then if you don't have a high school diploma, that jumps all the way up to 51%.
Wow, that's amazing. Um, did Arizona see an increase in volunteering when they implemented this system?
You know, I have not asked that question. I actually reached out to my colleague and friend Emily Litchfield, who is the Executive Director of Arizona's Volunteers and Commission and got this information from her, but I did not ask that question. But I can definitely ask that and get that follow-up information to Vice Chair Lane for you as well.
Yeah, because that's kind of like, you know, the proof in the pudding right there. If they're able to get more, right? And then my final kind of question is, you know, I mean, there's a lot of volunteer organizations in Chicago, right? Chicago Cares and all of them. And I know I've been, you know, through the years have been part of, you know, all kinds of, you know, initiatives or working groups on, on engagement and everything. Um, and the, the tracking and the onboarding and all of that is definitely a, a situation that would make it easier. But why should the county be the owner of that database? Or the state of that system? Why not one of the nonprofits who are a leader kind of, and then sharing that with other nonprofits? And that, those are my questions. Thank you.
In a perfect world, I would say that would make sense. Unfortunately, our organizations, as we all know, are siloed off as well, too. And also there is not one standard in terms of background checks. So one organization may need X amount of checks where another organization may need a different amount as well, too. Whereas if you had a standard that at least most folks signed on to, in this case being the county, you would be able to have that, that standard across the board. Along with that, too, price-wise, it becomes very hard for an organization, unless they're a very large organization, to handle this. And then you're also asking that organization to support with financial support, volunteers that may never come to them, which is hard to, you know, argue in a budget. So I see this as a public good to where everyone needs this as a support mechanism. And that's where I think government can come into play. Obviously, what I love to see happen is a statewide database, much like Arizona does. But I think a pilot model would be very helpful in that case.
Would you have a, an estimate on the cost of what that would be for the county?
Most of the cost is handled by the individuals because they're paying into the system to have that first check run. So I can tell you for Arizona, they charge $65 one-time fee once every five years for run that check. So that a lot of the cost is eaten up by that point. If there is other overhead, I'm not aware of it, but again, I can ask that question and get back to you on it.
Thanks. So the, so the cost is put on to the volunteers?
In that model it is. And honestly, back to my inclusion thing, there's probably better ways of doing it. But the Arizona model seems to be the, the one that has been around for the longest and has been able to be, you know, justifiable. So that's why I used.
Scott, given the way in which technology today is so vulnerable, have, have there been any issues in terms of hacking breaches, privacy right claims, other ancillary legal issues that we should be sensitive to?
Well, I'll start by saying I'm definitely not a lawyer, but for my-
I definitely am, but I can only ask the question.
But from my experience and my knowledge, I'm not aware of any. I will say that obviously PII, personal identifiable information, is a huge issue across the board. It's an issue that all organizations, nonprofit, for-profit deal with on a daily basis. So it's something I very much keep in mind. But I have not been made aware of any kind of major breaches or anything like that in terms of nonprofit background check information.
So let me, let me reframe my question a little bit in light of that. I, I, yeah, I think we are, need to be sensitive to that vulnerability. Is there anything structurally you would suggest from a design perspective to insulate the county, for example, or other participants from such claims? Have you seen situations where there might be a new entity established for this purpose? Or subcontract an existing firm that has expertise in those issues? Or, or, or are you just thinking this, the Arizona approach is probably the most practical one for us to model after?
No, there's several vendors out there that I'm aware of, and that comes from just me working with the AmeriCorps program. Each year in Illinois, AmeriCorps places over a thousand different volunteers. And each one of them has to have both an FBI check, a state check, a sex offender registry check. And if they're moving out from, out of the state, a state of residency check. So there's a lot of background checks AmeriCorps folks have to go through. And there are a couple of different vendors that do that and provide that check information. So there could be a potential where there could be a contract there that a vendor would do it with the support of whatever entity is running it. And that would also help to insulate as well, too, because obviously they're the experts in the field and they know what they're doing already because they've been around for quite some time.
Are you aware of those, of those firms indemnifying the government or nonprofit unit that engages their services?
I haven't dug into the contracts enough on that one to know for sure. I'm not aware of that. The other thing too is obviously the FBI tries to be very secure in these checks as well, too. They require anyone who accesses the checks to have an ORI. Or, and I'm blanking on how that actually acronym plays out. But the whole idea is you have to have a direct connection with the FBI to run these checks anyway. So there's also security at that level, too. But I do not have the expertise on that to speak with expertise.
So this is something that has not been widely embraced throughout the United States.
No.
What, what have the obstacles been?
A lot of it comes down to that finding an entity that's willing to take up the mantle. So when we got into a room together in Chicago for almost a decade ago now, our hope was that actually it was going to be CPS who was going to kind of run the show. Because they had the most volunteers and they had the most requirements. But CPS determined for several different reasons that it wasn't conducive at the time. And so they stepped away and that kind of caused it to fall apart, the conversations we had. We did have at the time, the Attorney General's Office involved. They were interested. We also had several other organizations. So there was potential there, but as soon as, you know, a big player either doesn't step up or steps away, the conversations tend to fall apart, much like any other kind of policy conversation you're going to have. So I think really if there's a champion that can step up and take this mantle, then you're going to have a much better chance of getting it done. I will say that there are more, more instances where something like this is being done. And honestly, the reason why we started having this conversation over 10 years ago was one of my other commissioners had taken a, a trip to China to meet with some volunteer organizations out there. And that country has a countrywide passport idea. And so they took that idea and said, hey, look, if they can do it, then why can't we? And started talking about that at the Chicago level and the, the metropolitan level. And that's how we had this conversation start.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
There was, there is a comment that was made by Commissioner Alston. It's something that kind of came to mind to me as well. So I'm not sure, Harry, if you want to just kind of say your comment. And then I think that'd be a really good discussion.
Sure. I was just raising the potential challenge, if you will, in terms of background checks, particularly more and more with folks with lived experience trying to take that experience and bring it forward as volunteers in community-based agencies and marginalized communities, that that could be a complicating factor. One, that the quality of background checks isn't always uniform. The types of things that may pop may or may not be accurate. And once again, for the work that they're doing, right? The things that those might raise from a, a past conviction experience or something like that are probably right in the heart of where they're trying to do their, their volunteer work to address those very problems that are holding them back as, as, as barriers to moving forward. So there's just a range of considerations around it. You know, I, I like the idea of a passport, particularly for folks that are looking to get engaged and volunteer across a wide spectrum of interest, right? It allows them to show up with that passport as a way as a credible, credible messenger of, of them. But we just want to make sure that it's done well and doesn't block folks out of opportunities to do good.
I completely agree with you, sir. And that's one of the things I, I try to impress on organizations I work with, with volunteers is only check for what you need to check. So if you've got somebody who is not going to be working with vulnerable populations, you probably don't need to worry about X, Y, and Z in their background. So every organization checks these at different levels. And one thing that I didn't go into detail with the Arizona model is what it does. And it basically lists out any kind of issues that may come up. So if, if a person has that ID, you will be able to see, okay, that they have this or that in their background, and then the organization can make that determination. Now that being said, I do think organizations in some cases act too much as gatekeepers and decide that they're going to turn people away that may not need to be turned away, but that's at the organizational level that we need to make that education more, more available to folks. And I mean, I, I dealt with a volunteer last week, made a mistake 15 years ago and wanted to give back to the community. And we had a heartfelt conversation with that person and we determined that, yep, we want him to serve. But that's a conversation that happens a lot.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Peter Criticals?
Yeah, I'm certainly sympathetic to the idea of background checks. I served on the amateur hockey board for a number of years, many years ago. And we were the first entity in youth sports, amateur sports, as far as we know, that actually required fingerprint bankroll checks of any coach, referee or any other, and actually team manager with direct contacts with kids. And two things happened. It was interesting. We lost a lot of coaches because they didn't want to go through that. And what we surmised from that was there are other things in their background that had nothing to do with potential sexual exploitation of kids, like a marijuana conviction, which apparently now that's pardoning everybody. You know, and that, and that was a, but they, they didn't want to go through the, they didn't want to go through that. They, so I'm certainly sympathetic with it. My concern about a passport, and I think this follows Commissioner Alston's comments, is that, but it's, it's very specific. And that is a point that you made, that volunteerism is, it can be a path to employment. And we've gone through long debates in the state about banning the box on applications. And if this become, it, my concern is, is whether this becomes a implied box. Uh, because you know, you, you start as a volunteer, they know that your background is such and such. And now it, it may come up as a question of employment. And, and so I, and that's for a very specific application, like I just described for hockey, having something that is unique to that particular circumstance makes sense. But to have a universal passport, my concern is, is that it, it becomes a block to employment to some people because volunteerism is actually a pathway to employment. It's just, it's just a point I want to raise. I don't know if you have an answer to it, but it's, it's a concern.
It's a, it's a very legitimate concern. And the one thing I want to be clear on too is the idea here would not be universal. It'd be if folks wanted to buy into this plan, much like when you're going through TSA, you can buy in to do the pre-check. And then you've got the pre-check done. You don't have to go through everything, take off your shoes and so forth and so on. So if we have people who volunteer or know they're going to volunteer for multiple organizations, they could go through this and have that done already to save the organization some money, too. Also, if we wanted to do it on the organizational side, one organization could pay for the check, like they usually do anyway. And then other organizations down the road for X amount of years would be able to run off that check too and say, how to do it again. So I don't see it as a universal piece, but I completely, your, 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 your concern there is well-founded. And again, I think it goes back to orga- organizationally, what folks are looking for. And I truly, my personal opinion is that some organizations look for stuff that they really shouldn't need to have to look for, be it petty drug convictions, be it traffic convictions or what have you. But then there's other organizations that if you're going to be tutoring, mentoring small children all day, then they do, they will do want to make sure that your background is, is cleaner than what others may be. So it, it varies from organization to organization as well, too.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, I'd like to thank Mr. McFarland for his, his provocative, apparently provocative presentation. And you know, a lot of food for thought there. And I would ask if those of you who may be interested in kind of exploring this idea and incubating it, Mr. McFarland has graciously agreed to collaborate with us in seeing what we might create here at the county level, which might serve as a pilot and eventually as a model for other government units around Illinois and throughout the country. So leveraging our thought leadership is, is, you know, one of the ingredients of our mission. So I will thank Mr. McFarland and those of you who may be interested in serving on such a working group or leading such a working group, please let me know. And we'll see what we might put together along those lines. So Scott, thanks again for, for your willingness to, to come before us and share your, your well-informed thoughts about passports and, and other, other possible approaches to improve outcomes for volunteers and organizations who put them to work. So thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity. I put my information in the chat. And also thank you all for your service. I know usually you don't get the thanks you, you deserve, and I thank you for all that you do. So if you need anything from me, I'm happy to be of service.
We will certainly, we'll certainly take unfair advantage of you and thanks for that offer. And if you'd like to stick around, we're, we're thrilled to have you do so. If you want to take off, we'd understand that as well. Madam Chair, with your permission, I think probably be appropriate now to move into reports of the working groups?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. So let me kind of go down the same list I did a, a few minutes ago. So if there is a report from Commissioners Freeman and/or Raymer on community investment vehicles, we'd love to hear it.
Uh, thank you so much. And again, the presentation, the previous presentation was really good in regards to challenging my thoughts around volunteer engagement. So thank you for that. But in regards to the CIVs, for those that may not be aware, the City of Chicago has released a request for proposal around various areas of community investment vehicle, research, business development, a number of categories minus actual CIV projects. Leading up to that point, our working group has pretty much gotten to the point of being ready to have something documented and as Commissioner Lane or Coach Lane has said, policy with teeth or an ordinance. So we do have the draft of a request for- So we do have the draft of, uh, requests for potential pilot identification for projects. So I do think there's opportunity for our group to continue the work. Um, now that the city has released something, um, paying attention to what they've released and complementing and supplementing that. So the goal is to have something introduced before the end of the year.
And I, I do want to say here, uh, Commissioner Freeman, Commissioner Raymer have been doing yeoman work on this topic, spending many, many hours on it, engaging other folks, stakeholders, interested parties, uh, subject matter experts. And, uh, I have, um, despite their enthusiasm, hard work and productivity, I have kind of encouraged an accelerated timeline here so that, uh, with a little bit of luck and a little more elbow grease, we might actually have an ordinance by year ends that we can include in our, uh, report. But more important, which can start actually paying dividends for people in marginalized communities throughout the county. So again, I want to thank the, uh, the leadership of this, uh, working group, which has just done extraordinary work. And, uh, I think we're going to be very, uh, happy with the outcome, both in terms of legislation, but much more important in terms of the impact of that legislation. So, uh, thank you, thank you so much, uh, Kristen and Wendy. You're, uh, you're great. And, uh, we'll continue to, uh, I always say you, you put your two bucks on the, on the jockey and not the pony. And I think we have some pretty good jackies here. So thank you so much. And Commissioner Aglope, I have already learned is not here. I think Commissioner Anderson is not here either. Am I correct? For report on reparations. Uh, so Commissioner Killen, I believe is here. Uh, perhaps a report on electric vehicles, if you'd be so kind. Or has she departed? Possibly so. Okay. Uh, and then Commissioner Austin, uh, thank you. By the way, Commissioner Austin has had, and I have had a series of back and forth communications or in, in, in the very recent past. And he's taking very seriously the testimony that has already come in on, uh, crime and criminal justice and various behavioral and algorithmic artificial intelligence and other approaches to reduce recidivism and have, uh, a more, um, meaningful and impactful, uh, decision-making process, both within the, the courts and in those places that incarcerate folks. So Commissioner Austin, I will defer to you and you can tell us what you'd like about your progress. And I'm, I'm grateful for that progress and I, 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 I see it on its way and I see it, the momentum picking up.
Well, I appreciate hearing you interpret it that way. To me, it still feels pretty embryonic. Just trying to motor out, first of all, who has an interest in, in joining this working group and thinking about how we define and redefine crime, violence, and criminal justice activities. So I'm, I'm still trying to actually to get out and get in with Jen's love work to kind of talk to him personally as well as the other presenter. But I did have a very, um, kind of inspiring conversation. And I've shared a link, uh, in my reply all to the commissioners about my conversation with Professor Robert Vargas over at the University of Chicago and some of his perspective and lens on addressing various, the public safety innovation. So I encourage you all to each to follow that link and, and, and see what thinking that spurs for you. Feel free to shoot me back any questions, considerations, or, um, feedback on that information, as well as those of you all that have got your working groups up and, and running. Any, happy to take any ideas about getting this thing off the launching pad. But right now I'm just trying to think about who are credible, uh, voices to bring into this conversation and, and try to balance some other things. For example, in addition to Dr. Vargas, I'm, had conversations through one of my, uh, potential grant projects with, uh, District Attorney in Manhattan and New York about some of the work they're doing of their in combination with other community-based organizations, which I think represents some holistic and really viable approaches. I want to bring their learnings in, in, into the conversation. So that's kind of what I've been doing at this point is, is reaching out, getting alternative points of view so that I can shape up an actionable framework, uh, for this working. So that's pretty much what I, I have to present it at this time. No big report, no glowing outline of activities on or strategic plan. Just muddling around in a very embryonic state, trying to think about what this should look like.
Well, thank you, Gary. And, uh, you know, as, as you and I discussed, uh, I'd like to have Professor Vargas, uh, come before the commission very early next year. Uh, and in the meantime, to the extent he's willing to collaborate with the working group, uh, that would be great. And again, to remind all of the commissioners of it is encouraged that non-commissioners join working groups. You could bring in, uh, any individuals who have knowledge, expertise, uh, interest uh, in supporting the work of the, of the working group. And, uh, I think that, that's great. Uh, so thank you for that. And, uh, we'll have, uh, we'll, we'll be looking forward to great things out of you, uh, your humility, uh, among many other reasons for that. And, uh, Commissioner Thomas has already kind of declared herself that she's going to be holding a meeting, uh, within the next, uh, week or so. And I believe, uh, that constitutes all of the reports, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you all for all your hard work. Um, as I know, as a commission, uh, and working groups of volunteers, I know that, uh, time is limited and you all have a lot, uh, going on. So very appreciative of, of all the hard work and again, intentionality that is put into all the working groups to really come, uh, and produce something, um, uh, that will potentially be presented to the Board of Commissioners, um, or encourage any policy change. So thank you all. Um, so, um, I did, uh, I know that we had to skip a few. We were trying to make sure that our presenters were able to, um, um, uh, again, present, uh, due to time constraints. But I did want to just make some, uh, very quick announcements and maybe we'll have, uh, Sotchi Flores jump in really quickly. But I did want to make the announcement that today, um, President Tony Praknko, um, had her announcement or her budget address. Um, so we have an eight point seven five, um, billion dollar, uh, executive budget recommendation. Um, and we are about to go into budget season. So I encourage you all to look into some of the initiatives that are going to be highlighted, um, that, uh, may pertain to this, um, this commission, one that I can think of off the top of my head. And it's very timely because, um, applications are, uh, open today is the Cook County Promise Initiative. Uh, it's a promise guaranteed income, um, applications open today, uh, October 6th. They will be available for individuals. Um, it will be guaranteeing $500 to 3,250 individuals that live in Cook County for the next two years. Um, so that is a, a great initiative that we're excited about. Um, so I will be sure that all members have the flyer and the link so that they can, um, you know, jump on and, and, and distribute to, uh, anybody accordingly. Um, also the Cook County Manufacturing Reinvented Grant, Reinvented, uh, yeah, grant is open already. So it's about $5 million that will be, um, uh, granted, uh, to suburban manufacturers. And that's due on October 31st. So I'll be sure to forward over that information just in case anybody knows any other suburban, um, individuals that may, or, um, manufacturing, uh, entities that may, uh, want to apply for that. Um, and I will also be sure to send over any, um, I'm sorry, the, um, the description of the other initiatives and, uh, the press release that was sent out by the president's office that highlights that. Um, again, the different things that we, um, will probably be, uh, seeing coming up the, the pipeline with, um, uh, with the president's, uh, office and in Cook County overall. Uh, and then the final thing is, um, there is public, um, hearings for the budget. Uh, that will be on October 13th. So I believe a week from today. Um, there's going to be one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And I will also make sure that you all have all the details, uh, just in case you see something, um, that interests you or something that you want to, again, put, uh, some official on the record support for, that you have the opportunity to do so. Um, and with that, I will open it up if there's any other announcements, um, before we adjourn.
Yeah. Commissioner Chairman and I, it's Kristy D. Laurentis from South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association. Just want to let everyone know that SSMMA, all of you should recall that we were successful in passing our South End Reactivation Act legislation, uh, earlier this spring. We had, um, a recent, uh, press event and we've launched an interactive site map up on our website, SSMMA's website with a toolkit that really is, uh, streamlining and creating efficiency, we believe, uh, for both municipalities and potential investors. So I wanted to express my support for this body, uh, for your active support when we were navigating through the legislature and, um, just say that we're off and running and we already have prospects that are interested, that are now in the development, uh, agreement process with, uh, South Suburban Municipality. So again, we think this is a real tool. And, um, we, I have identified this as a pilot, uh, that we think can apply to other parts of our region and the state. So I'll put our website in and it's, uh, right within our landing page. If you just scroll down, you'll get into a, a, um, a section that's, uh, related to the South End Reactivation Act. So again, just thank you. Just wanted to share that news with everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, any other? Oh, yes. Your, Chief Flores.
Thank you. And I just wanted to highlight that I have added in the chat two important, um, digital toolkits and hoping that, uh, fellow commissioners can share information about two programs that are currently open and available to residents and businesses. One is the Cook County Guaranteed Income Pilots. Um, the application opened up today. So I have, um, included the link to our digital toolkit as well as the websites. And additionally, our small business grant program, $10,000 grants available to businesses. So the grant program and the digital toolkit, um, are available at, in the chat. So I appreciate anyone sharing information within your network.
Thank you so much. We'll be sure to share the links with, uh, the group. Um, and I do, the only one that's missing on here, uh, Sotchi is the Manufacturing Reinvented. Is there, is there a link for that one as well?
I will put that in there.
Okay. Thank you. Just so that we can, um, make sure to send all of these. Great. Um, any other final comments or announcements? Don't see any hands up. Great. Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, move, move by. By D. Laurentis?
Okay, D. Laurentis. And it was moved by Raymer? Okay. Wanted to make sure. Great. Uh, thank you. All those in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Great meeting, everybody. Thanks so much. Be well. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.